With that, I'll call the April 13th Village Board Meeting to order and ask Penny to call the roll. You're on mute.
Let me try that again. Trustee Guyer?
Here.
Trustee Spurling? Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger?
Here.
Trustee Youngerman?
Here.
And Trustee Marisak?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, we do have a quorum. Thank you. And I will go back up and would like to... All of us rise for the pledge. To the flag of the United States of America.
To America.
And to the republic for which it stands.
For which it stands.
One nation, under God.
Under God.
Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all.
Justice for all.
All right, thank you. All right, just so the public's aware, we are recording this meeting. We are streaming it live on YouTube. And we've provided... The Village Hall is open for any resident that didn't have either of those methods to view this meeting today. And with that, I'll go into the public participation portion of the meeting. We have public comments. Administrator Zoffel, has anybody submitted via email or phone?
We received no public comments.
Okay. All right, hearing none, I'll go ahead and I'm going to forego the reading of the proclamation for Arbor Day and entertain a motion for approval.
So moved. Second.
Okay.
Before you take the roll, I just want to let you know Teresa has joined us.
Perfect.
President Brawley, I wasn't clear on who was first and second, please.
I had the first as Youngerman and the second was?
Probably me. Denny?
Okay, wonderful. Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
And Trustee Betzinger?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, and that carries unanimously. Thank you. I'll go on and I'll read the consent agenda, entertain a motion for approval on that. We have minutes of the Village Board Meeting of March 9th, executive session minutes of March 9th, minutes of the emergency Village Board Meeting from March 18th, the building report for March of 2020, accounts payable through March 23rd, 2020, accounts payable through April 9th, 2020, accounts receivable report for March of 2020, the cancellation of the April 21st, 2020 Committee of the Whole Meeting, and the last item is the Village President Emergency Succession Plan. Is there a motion? Motion by Doug?
Second.
Second.
Second by Dan. Go ahead and call the roll, Penny.
Thank you. Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger?
Yes.
And Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
All right, that carries unanimously. Thank you. I was going to, if there's no objection, go out of order, but Jeff is our essence applicant in the waiting room, or?
He is not.
So, since that's not the case, I'll stick with the order here on the agenda and move on to items for separate action this evening. We have ordinance 1877, adopting the operating and capital improvements budget for fiscal year 2021. This is a waiver of first and passage on the second. And I'll ask our Director of Finance, Justin Van Born, if he has anything additional to add.
There were a few changes between the last time the board has seen the budget and now. In the general fund, property tax, sales tax, income tax, and video gaming tax all decreased. And then the UDO, CMAP, second payment from the village is not going to take place until in fiscal year 21. There are other changes in other funds that we will forego unless there's any questions from the board.
All right, any board member have any questions?
How about the surplus? Has that changed?
The surplus in the general fund was $226,000 and it is now at $141,000.
Thank you.
And Justin, can you just comment a little bit? I know we've talked about, due to the pandemic, what we... I mean, we obviously don't know what the impact could be to certain funds that we receive, our sales tax and that. And can you kind of walk through when we would see that and what we would do a few months from now to kind of counteract that?
Sure. So, sales tax is three months behind, so we wouldn't see April sales tax until July. What we would do to combat that, I have already identified items that are non-essential that we could we could forego. In addition to that, there are two funds, the employee insurance fund and the vehicle and equipment replacement fund that we could decrease contributions to both of those as well.
Okay. Those are my questions. Anything else from the board? All right. Thank you, Justin. So, with other questions, would entertain a motion for item A, ordinance 1877?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Second by Denny. Any discussion? All right, call the roll, please.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
And Trustee Betzinger?
Yes.
All right, and that carries unanimously. Thank you. Item B this evening, we have ordinance 1878, approving the salary schedule for village employees, waiver of first and passage on the second reading. Administrator Zoffel?
This is just taking the ranges that you agreed to in the pay and comp study and formally adopting them. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but it's just us doing an ordinance that puts those ranges into effect.
Any questions?
Is there any concern with the expected decrease in revenue to the village with the salary schedule that we're looking at adopting tonight?
I don't think so. I mean, when we get closer to the time for, you know, increases, then we'll take a look and see where we are, see if we need to adjust anything. But I don't think adopting their ranges, that there's any concern at this time.
Thank you.
Because those raises are all in November, right?
Correct.
Okay. All right, so watch that closely. Anything else?
No, sir.
Are some of those ranges retroactive, though, to February?
The ones for public works, yes. I mean, anybody who's below the range were moved to the minimum, so... So those did take effect. And like I said, we will leave those in effect and we'll look and see if we need to adjust anything in November, or as we get close to November.
Motion to approve ordinance 1878 for the salary study?
Second.
All right, go ahead.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger?
Yes.
And Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
All right, that carries unanimously. Thank you. Item C this evening is ordinance 1879, authorizing the execution of a third amendment to the Flanders Amendment to the annexation agreement for the Flanders property. This is Blackberry Crossings, single lot at 2640 Deer Point Road. This is waiver of first and passage on the second. Director Young?
Yes, thank you. This is the annexation agreement amendment that we've talked about previously. This is in order to allow the resident at 2640 Deer Point Drive to install a five-foot-high vinyl fence. And the Village Board directed us to put together this annexation agreement amendment and move forward with approval tonight.
Thank you. Any questions? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, go ahead.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
And Trustee Betzinger?
Yes.
All right, that carries six-nothing. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item D this evening is a resolution 2020-005, authorizing the village's share of costs for the Concord Drive and Baseline Road Laffo projects. Engineer Wallers?
So many of you will recall that we routinely use the federal grant program to coincide with our own road program. We're able to use federal money on our federal aid urban routes, which we have several in the village. This year, the council mayor, the King County, excuse me, Kane Kendall Council of Mayors has slightly changed the scoring system. And for us to get our maximum amount of points, because these grants are competitive, we would score maximum points if we had a resolution that confirmed support of the village being able to match the local share. So tonight, we're asking for consideration for approval of the resolution supporting our matching those federal monies. Just to put it in perspective, the Baseline Road Program project is approximately $657,000. We're requesting a grant of $463,000. The local share would be $193,524. On the Gordon Road project, the total project is $1,318,960. And we'll be requesting the maximum amount, which is $500,000, so the village share would be 818,960. So all told, we're asking for a... We're requesting $963,575 in federal grant for those two road projects. These are not scheduled for next year. They are programmed into our long-range budget. And so, when we may or may not get those monies, but we want to be, I guess, as prepared as we can to make sure we have the best chance to get them. We've been successful in the past. We hope we'll be successful again. So that's the purpose of this resolution. Again, the money is in the budget, the future budget, and be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Engineer Wallers? Okay. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
All right, call the roll, Penny.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
And Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, thank you. I'll move on to item E this evening, award a contract for the Jackson Street Sanitary Sewer Improvements to LUC Group in the amount of $112,820. Engineer Wallers?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a project that's going to replace a sanitary sewer on Jackson Street that the village has had chronic problems with blockage on and has been the subject of many callouts and nuisance to the residents. We had eight bidders on the project. The low bidder was LUC Group LLC out of La Grange. The engineer's estimate was $140,700, so it was well below the estimate. We have done reference checks on LUC. They have come back favorably. And so our recommendation would be to award the project to LUC Group LLC in the amount of $112,820. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have a question for Engineer Wallers. Have they done work in any of the surrounding areas?
Yes, they actually did a project in North Aurora, and North Aurora was one of the places that we did contact. They were very pleased with the work that they're doing. A lot of their other work was... This is a company that has done a lot more private work than public work, and they're trying to get into the public sector. We also followed up with some references on some of their private work. And we didn't have anybody that reported anything but favorable on their work and their cooperation.
Thank you.
Going from a primarily private to public, is the scope of this job within the realm of something they've done in the past? And the second question, not necessarily related, was what was the difference between their low bid of $112 and the second lowest bid?
So the first question, I guess, Trustee Betzinger, is this would be well within their capability. And I think it's somewhat representative of how they're trying to break into the marketplace by choosing projects that are really pretty manageable. The work that we reviewed that they did for some of the private entities was far larger than this, so it's quite manageable. It's a pretty straightforward project. The next low bidder was Stark &amp; Sons at $124,985. So I think it was... And so, you know, we would have felt either of those bids was good, and so we didn't see any red flags when we reviewed the quantities or the unit prices. So we're comfortable with their bid. And again, I think, especially after we checked the references, we felt very comfortable recommending them.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? If not, is there a motion to approve item E?
So moved.
Second.
All right, call the roll.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
And Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
All right, that carries six-zero. Thank you. Thank you, Pete. Item F this evening is a resolution 2020-006. That's ratifying the executive order 2020-02 that I spoke with all of the board about individually before we did that last week. That's the water assistance program. Justin, I don't know if you're prepared, just to comment briefly on the interest that we've had in this program.
Sure. As of this morning, there was around 800 people that had contacted the village for assistance. As of late this afternoon, the last time I checked, there was 888 who had contacted us, so with the water bills going out, the last couple days has been very, very heavy on getting those requests in.
Director Van Born, that's 880 requests. Out of how many household accounts do we have in the village?
Roughly 9,000 household accounts.
Thank you.
So I know some of the comments that we've received from residents is the... That there's not a whole lot of red tape that goes along with this. The idea is that we're in the middle of a tremendous amount of unknowns for some of our residents and providing something like this without asking a whole lot of questions about their personal lives. I know they've appreciated that. Justin reported those comments to me earlier today, so we'll keep getting the update and the reports on this, but would, if there's no other question about that, would entertain a motion to approve this resolution?
You know, I have one thing before we move on. I just wanted to say, I know you and I talked about this, Matt, last week also on the phone.
Yeah.
And I had some concerns at the time, and they're still concerning to me today. And I'm not opposed to assisting the residents. But, you know, this was extended to non-residents in Boulder Hill, but we overlooked residents in Montgomery that live in apartments that don't pay water bills. And Anderson Farms Senior Apartments, those people are not going to be able to participate. That's about 120 units. And we didn't do anything for small businesses. And I would have preferred if we would have had an emergency open meeting so that we could have discussed this as a group. Because, you know, I had a lot of, you know, questions and concerns and, as you and I had talked before, I, you know, I worked for the village in 2008 when we had the financial crisis. And, you know, that's concerning, just the way things are going. It just, you know, we ended up, we had to lay people off, we had to reduce services, we had to forego expenses as far as equipment. And, you know, it just, I would just, I would have been more comfortable if we could have talked about this as a group in an open session, so we could have asked some questions and got some answers from staff in particular, as far as, you know, what type of impact this was going to have on us, so.
It's a point well taken. I know when you and I talked, we specifically talked about Anderson Apartments. I mean, the good news is, none of those individuals do have a water bill from us, so there was nothing there for us to rebate. On the small business side, I did take Friday last week to call about 55 of our smallest businesses. I started with restaurants and kind of worked my way through, asking what we could do if they needed help from us. That was the day that the SBA loans went active, and so I asked them all specifically about that. Many of them had already filled out and submitted their application, which was positive. There were some that asked for assistance that we were able to help with. And I did poach around a little bit on the water bill topic. It seemed like it was a mixed bag. Most of the businesses that I connected with and asked, some of those didn't pay their water bill. Their landlord paid it. And maybe there were some other avenues that we could help, like promoting our small family, you know, small family-owned businesses specifically to encourage residents to go there. So, I mean, I think we're trying to do a three-tiered approach here in that regard. And I will say openly that, you know, approving an executive order to abate water bills for, you know, what amounted to up to $900,000 was not something that I took lightly, which is why individually called every board member for those conversations. And certainly would much prefer us having a sit-down meeting or a meeting like this just for transparency's sake. But the water bills were going out on that Tuesday, I think, or they were supposed to be printed, and so time is of the essence. And I just asked the board for a little bit of discretion on that, so. But your point is well taken, Dan.
Yeah, and the water bills, we're just using it as a conduit to get the money to the people. I mean, this was done, you know, to forego some hardships of the residents that they were facing. And, you know, the water bill was just, you know, just an easy conduit to funnel the money to people. But, yeah, that's, that's, that's where I'm at on it.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments from the board?
Yeah, I have a quick question for Director Van Born. Was there additional messaging on the actual water bills? Unfortunately, I haven't seen mine yet. It's probably in the mailbox, so just wondering if there was... If that was another way we were getting the message out to the residents.
It first went out on social media, then within the water bill. We did not have an actual newsletter in there. What was in there was a one-page explanation of the program itself. In addition to that, it mentioned the property tax rebates that would go out by the end of April. So it was very well explained in the water bills.
I'm sorry, I completely forgot about that. I do remember seeing that, so my apologies.
I got a quick question. This is Denny. Did, now, the people in Boulder Hill, you say it's just social media, but, I mean, when I got the call, it was going... Water bill was going out the next day. I was going to be in it, and it didn't go out for probably at least a week or so, but did that letter, just the letter, go out to all the Boulder Hill people? And how many houses do we have there?
So, the letter went out to village residents and customers in Boulder Hill. There's roughly 2,900 accounts in Boulder Hill versus roughly 6,100 in the village.
Village, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, anything else? Hearing none, is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Betzinger, second by Doug. Go ahead.
Trustee Betzinger?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
No.
Trustee Spurling? And Trustee Lee?
Yes.
All right, and that carries five-one. Thank you all. I really appreciate it. And as you can see with this, with 800 people in a week submitting for this, there's certainly a tremendous amount of uncertainty right now, and we're doing exactly, I think, what we always intended for a rainy day fund, which is our budget surplus that we honestly were holding there. Over the last couple of years, that started to grow a little bit as a result of the budget crisis down in Springfield. And so if this, I think Doug mentioned on my call with him, if this isn't the rainy day, then what is? So I do appreciate all of your leadership there.
Well, I think the other thing, Matt, is I think other towns only had like a 20% fallback, and ours was, I think Justin said, 32% or something. So we had more money for a rainy day fund than a lot of the other towns.
Yeah.
Yeah, I get that too, but I'm more concerned with the storms and the rainy days. I just hope it doesn't storm. That's where I'm concerned. Like I said, I lived through 2008. I was here for the flood in '96, and I was here for the five tornado that came through in '90, and those all were storms, and it cost the village a considerable amount of money to come through those, so.
All right. With that, I would like to move on to our items for discussion this evening. We do have a request for a liquor license at 1890 Douglas Road from Mr. Ahmad Youssef. Has he joined the call at this point?
No, the requesting party has not joined at this point.
Okay. And we don't have any information on that, and so we would probably push this to a future meeting?
Yes.
Okay. All right, without objection, we will skip this item.
Just a quick thing. If the petitioner decides that this is an emergency and he wants something done relatively quickly, could we have another meeting if we needed to?
I probably wouldn't. The only reason is, we weren't going to have it on this agenda, and at his request, we added it, because it is a little bit awkward to do it on the Zoom, and so we specifically added it. I know that staff specifically reached out to him. And Village Hall is open if he, you know, didn't have the technology to get on here. Meeting two weeks from tonight.
I spoke with him about 15 minutes before the meeting, and he told me he was going to call in.
So there's...
Maybe he's having technical difficulties or something, so, okay.
I told him he could use the video or the audio, and he said he thought he would just call in, because that would be easier. But he has not yet.
Okay. Well, we'll see what happens tomorrow, or when we hear from him.
Yeah, we'll follow up with him.
All right, it'll take me a second here to read the rest of the items, so. All right, item eight is new or unfinished business. Does anybody have anything?
Yeah, I have one thing, if I could. The, we canceled the viewfication committee next week, but I wanted to let everybody... But I want to let everybody know, we're continuing with our, with our current projects. Arbor Day is on the 24th. Public Works will plant the tree on Arbor Day, but we will not hold a public ceremony. And then the bridge flowers, Mark Wolf and Ed Pfaff are ordering the supplies. They're going to have everything ready for the planting. The planting is scheduled for Saturday, May 16th at 9:00 a.m. And we're hoping by then we'll be able to plant as a group. But if we cannot, Public Works will plant the flowers during normal work hours so that we will have bridge flowers. And that's it.
We got a question for Mark and for Chief, just checking in how the staff's doing, how they're feeling. I know you guys are putting in social distancing protocols and split shifts and all that kind of good stuff. Just checking in with you guys how you're holding up and how the staffs are doing.
Mark, you want to go first?
Sure. You know, everybody's holding up well. I think, you know, obviously, at the heightened point of this pandemic, we had a few employees with some scares where we had kind of third-party contact people with have tested positive. But thankfully, we haven't had anyone in our workforce test positive. So, you know, it's been a little bit of a struggle. I know a lot of my staff is eager to get back to work, which is a great sign. But they also, you know, realize and understand why we're doing what we're doing. So, you know, all in all, it's a challenge. And I think everyone can attest to that, just trying to keep things as operational and normal as we can. But I would say right now, things are moving along swift and as good as they can right now.
Thanks for the sentiment, Tom. Our staff is doing well. We have some very challenging times because we're trying to limit the amount of exposure our officers have with the public. That being said, that raises certain challenges, like how to go into a call when we don't know there's COVID in the house or not. So our guys, now we put out a policy where before they go into any residence, at least mask up and glove up. Just the protocol that everybody seems to be using seems to work. I'm sure it adds a lot more stress on the individuals complaints of taking their clothes home, going home to their family. The unknown, but overall, their spirits are high, their morale is good. Our staffing levels seem to be good. We have seen a slight uptick in calls lately. It's figured we're going to have a lot more domestic problems, a couple of runaways, suspicious neighbor calls, more people are home looking throughout the neighborhood. But overall, our staff is doing very well. We do not have anybody that has become sick, even though we've had a lot of contact with individuals that are possibly COVID. We'll just move on each day and take as it is.
All right, thanks, fellows. I know, you know, I don't speak for the board, but I know we appreciate what you guys do every day. And Jeff, your staff in the office, and Rich, and Justin, everybody. I mean, it's a whole new world out there for all of us, but you guys especially, we appreciate what you're doing and keep your spirits up.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mark. Thank you, staff.
Sure, thank you.
Yeah. And one other thing, if you guys don't know the COVID, you're supposed to space, keep 10 feet away from each other. And if you don't know what 10 feet is, think of a wide receiver from the Bears running out for a pass and Tabinsky throwing it. And that's how far away it usually is, 10 feet.
I'm surprised you were able to get that meme with your AOL dial-up internet.
I know, I just had to throw it. I had a sign, but it doesn't make a difference.
All right, else? They were unfinished? I did want to thank staff, Mark, Chief, Rich, Justin, Pete, Laura, Jeff, so I'm forgetting anybody on here, Debbie. We have daily 9:00 a.m. COVID calls ever since the emergency declaration, just to kind of run down what everybody's going to be working on that day and how the staff is doing. So I certainly appreciate that. It seems like we are well-coordinated and going to kind of get through this together. So I do appreciate it, and the board as well. I know I spent a lot of time on the phone. So would also like to thank the press for dialing into this. As you, I'm sure you're well aware, transparency still is one of our number one concerns. And so having you visually on this call, even though we are recording and live, certainly helps. It's also nice to see everybody's smiling face. So thank you for joining this evening. I'm not going to read through our future meetings. Our next village board meeting is two weeks from tonight on April 27. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss collective negotiating matters pursuant to five ILCS 120 over two.
So moved.
It was moved by Youngerman and second by Betsinger. And again, we will be adjourning to executive session to start a, start a different Zoom call, and we'll see you all in two weeks. You're muted.
All right, trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
And trustee Betsinger.
Yes.
All right, and with that, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you. You save everyone.